I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, July 1st, 2024, to order. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Charles, would you please leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item two, public hearing to obtain public comment and consider enactment of an ordinance to amend the code of the Town and Guilford Affordable Housing Commission. We are looking to alleviate the issue we had with the bare majority rule, as was pointed out by Susan a couple of meetings ago, I think now. And there are a couple of alternatives. One would be to recast, go back out and search once again, or interview once again, for the candidates. Although, we had a substantial number of candidates that had been vetted by the work group, the Affordable Housing Work Group. The likelihood of some of those folks changing their affiliation is pretty slim. So I think one of the options we're left with is primarily expanding the size of the commission. And given the numbers that, and the current representation, I think we would need to add four members to that. The co-chairs of the ad hoc Affordable Housing Committee, Sandy being one of them, and Kirsty Ruben Dean being the other, I think that that's the most workable solution. So is there anyone who wishes to comment on the size, the potential change of the size in terms of the number of board members for the Affordable Housing Commission? Anyone in the public wishing to comment? I know this is pretty much inside baseball, but...
It's not changing, just sort of saying, it's not the intent in any way to change the function or operation. It's a way to make sure that representation across the community, there's an opportunity for that.
Got it.
Is that fair?
What will the total new number be?
I think it goes, I think it now goes to thirteen voting members, maybe? Either eleven or thirteen, I'm not sure.
I think that number's still workable, but I do think that we got to limit it a little bit. I think this is a good solution because the folks that, like you said, have been vetted, not only have been vetted, but they've been actively involved up to this point. And you hate to, especially you hate to lose that experience. And they have enthusiasm about what they're doing. And I think that's a good idea to keep them involved and then start bringing on the newer folks, too. I think it's a good idea, but, you know, we don't... The best thing about this is that they can operate now even if the other seats aren't filled because they'll have quarrels. But they could start meeting with the existing people, with the vacancies.
Well, Pete and I were talking about that last week. Pete, you're online. And Pete had somewhat of a different impression than... Peter, you want to comment on that? Pete, are you there? Well, we can talk about that when we have the item on the agenda. Pete should probably still be there.
Matt, I'm sorry. Yeah, I am here. I was having a little trouble with my...
The phrase of this decade, "You're on mute."
I was on mute, yeah. So I'm sorry, what was, yeah, what was the question there?
Yeah. Is, Charles is saying, if we expand the number of voting members for the Affordable Housing Commission to accommodate the bare majority issue that was brought to our attention recently, would we be able to appoint members as have already been identified and allow them to conduct business? Or do we have to wait until such time as we have a full slate and have satisfied the bare majority rule?
Well, you know, I was taking a look at our charter again this weekend. Let me just pull that up. The number of members of any one political party who may be appointed to any appointed board or commission shall not exceed a bare majority of the whole membership of that board or commission. So Matt, this is where you and I were having a discussion. And I was looking on the off chance that maybe there was a similar court case that came up interpreting that language. I found none. So the question is, does it exceed a bare majority of the whole membership of the board or commission? Does that mean actual serving members? Or does that mean the potential membership, the number, right, of all members that the charter provides for that particular board or commission? So I think we got to the point where we're saying, well, if you can appoint folks, you got to leave those vacant. You can't, the ones that would exceed the bare majority of a particular party would be vacant until filled by a member of the non-majority party, if you follow what I'm saying.
So it sounds like you're landing on, we could start to do business with only, with no more than a bare majority of the total members that are to be seated?
That's where I'm landing. That's where I'm landing as of now. That's right.
Okay, good. Charles, you go.
If that's where anyone, just be able to let them get started because I knew this was a little bit of a...
Got it. Anyone else wish to comment? Other board members? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item three, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board on any agenda items? I don't see anybody raising their hand or attempting to speak. Then move on to item four, approved minutes.
We have an item to add to the agenda.
Yeah, we do have. We could do that now. Is there a motion to add a item, let's call it nine A, the registrars for a discussion and possible action on having one voting location for the August 13th Republican primary? Is there a motion to add that?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? Try your minds. Select woman, Renner? Got you. Hand up. Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thanks. Approved minutes, June 17th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Make the motion. Second.
And a second. Any comments or questions, suggested changes? I had none. Anyone else? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Item five, Board of Education Business Manager, Linda Trudeau. Good morning, Linda.
Good morning.
There you go. And we're going to discuss and take possible action on a resolution to authorize the lease purchase agreement for the Board of Education. Linda, the floor is yours.
Okay. So as we've done every year, the Board of Ed is looking to enter into another capital lease as was proposed in the 2425 budget. This lease is $630,000 for Chromebooks, classroom multimedia displays, office desktops, and a maintenance van for the facilities department. I sent out requests for proposals from three companies, only received one proposal back. So that is Cogent Bank. The Board of Ed had budgeted $146,160 for the first payment of this lease, estimating a 6% interest rate. The actual rate that was proposed by Cogent Bank is 4.74% with annual payments of $137,931. So this would be within our budget amount for the first year. As you know, the Board of Ed cannot enter into debt on our own, so we are asking your permission to enter into this lease. And I believe you've all received a copy of the resolution that was prepared by Matt Ritter for the Board of Selectmen to authorize this.
Okay, Linda, yes, we do have the resolution.
I don't have the exhibits with the list of equipment. I'm assuming that this is the lease that we've done many times before. It's almost like a rolling lease.
Yeah, laptops and supporting equipment, right, Linda? It's basically the same style of equipment that the technology items that we've previously done under this lease?
Right. And I believe this will be the third year that we've added in maintenance vehicles so that we could replace the vehicles that were pushing 20 years old.
So it's more of the technology now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I recall that.
Yeah. All right. How many vehicles are in this?
It's just one vehicle. It's a maintenance van. With an estimate of $75,000 for the maintenance van.
And the total value of this lease authorization is 600,000?
630,000.
Yes, 630.
And that was in the budget that was most recently approved?
Yes, it was.
So the role of the Board of, the role of the Board of Selectmen here is only to approve this document. We're not really here to discuss what the funds are being used for at all. We're just voting on the, since the Board of Ed can't enter into a debt agreement, that's our function. But that's, we're not discussing the purchase.
Charles, I think you had a question as to whether or not it's a lease or a lease purchase. These are lease purchases. This is a lease purchase agreement, is my understanding.
They're not, they're not a lease where, at the end of the lease, we return the items back. We own these things outright. So it's just a way to finance the purchase over five years. But we buy the equipment, we own it, we buy the vehicle, we own it, we don't turn it back at the end of the lease.
It's just a financing mechanism.
All right. So are we adding a, is that what this comes onto, is we're adding a vehicle?
No, we're replacing an existing vehicle that has well exceeded its life.
Yeah, I'm assuming the old one will go out of service when we get the new one, Linda?
Yes. It'll be traded in or whatever we can get for it.
Yeah, the vehicle thing is, I don't remember that being, makes sense.
It does. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. Before we move on to Cliff, John Trudis just walked in. John is our new director, our new economic development coordinator, has been on board. This is week three, I think, John. So wanted to have an opportunity to introduce you to the board. And Charles Haberda, Lou Federici, Sue Renner is on via Zoom. Sandy Rudolph is unable to be here. She's not available today. So just welcome aboard. And what we had, just so you know, I'm remiss in not talking about this earlier, and you don't have to say anything today, but previously... Previously, Sherri Cody would present once a month, usually the second Board of Selectmen meeting, just what's going on, a little update on all the...
Yeah, I thought that was helpful. You know, if you had the time and you get yourself comfortable, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I have my first EDC meeting tomorrow morning, so maybe next one would be a good timing. Good update.
It's something you would like to say, or?
No, no, I have in hand my report for tomorrow, but I'd like to go through with the committee tomorrow and talk it through.
Sure.
And then bring it back in.
So let's count on potentially the 15th, I'm getting on the 15th. Just local board.
Good, thank you. Glad to be here.
All right. Item six, Director of Operations for the Board of Education, Cliff Gurnum. Good morning, Cliff.
Good morning. How are we doing?
Item one, six dot one, is consider and take possible action on the Baldwin Gym bleacher floor abatement. Floor is yours, Cliff.
Upon attended. So what we're looking to do at Baldwin is actually a two-phase program. This is the first phase. The second phase will happen next summer. We did testing on the floor prior to getting into this project. It did come back positive for mastic, which had asbestos in it. So we have to do an abatement of the entire floor throughout the gym. This today, we're just doing underneath the bleachers because we have to move the bleachers away from the wall, abate the area where the bleachers are, and then move the bleachers back. So this piece here is for the abatement of just under the bleachers. The majority of the floor will get done next summer. So there's two things you're approving today that we're looking for approval on for that project. One is this, the actual abatement. And again, due to the fact that the Board of Selectmen meeting is a day prior to the Standing Building Committee, the Standing Building Committee will not have the opportunity to look at this until tomorrow night. So we're going to be asking for approval contingent upon the recommendation from the Standing Building Committee at tomorrow night's meeting. I do have the chair's approval to move forward with this already, but the entire committee will be tomorrow. So we're asking for the Board of Selectmen to award the project, to understate, to contract, to Best Tech Environmental Services in the amount of $10,943.
Hey, is there a motion to approve the award to Gordian in the amount of $11,006.70 contingent upon the full approval of the Standing Building Committee, which is anticipated tomorrow night's meeting?
Just to correct that, I think you may be looking at the second part. Did you say $11,006.70?
The only attachment we have is from this company, Gordian.
Yeah, this morning I sent over, I don't know.
Okay. It's the same document for both of your first two items. So let's rephrase it again, Cliff, the amount and who's the award is to?
Yeah, the award is to Best Tech Environmental Services in the amount of $10,943.
Is there a motion to that effect with the caveat?
I'll move it.
Second. Further comments or questions?
Best Tech, somebody we've used and everything.
Have we used Best Tech in the past, Cliff?
Yes, we have, quite often. They do a great job.
Great. And when is this work going to be taking place?
This summer. We're moving the bleachers July 10th, and then a day or two after that, they'll start the abatement.
Excellent. So does that mean the gym, the Baldwin Gym is not available for summer programs this year?
No, it's not. Correct. It's down, but we will be in good shape for voting in August. We'll be back online for that.
Great. Well, we may change that condition shortly. All right. All right. Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
I think that motion carries. All right, six dot two. Now we're talking about Gordian and $11,006.70. Cliff, you want to talk about that?
Correct. And this just, you know, goes towards the same project with the floor abatement piece. Once we abate the floor, we're putting in a temporary floor plywood in order to maintain the proper height of the bleachers. So it'll be able to be used during the school year, slide in and out. So we're requesting that the Board of Selectmen approve contingent upon SBC approval at tomorrow's night meeting to award this to BMP Construction under the Gordian contract in the amount of $11,006.70.
All right. Is there a motion for something?
I'll make that.
In a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Oh, wait a second. We also need to add waive the bid process because it's buying off a contract on a manager.
I amended the waive the bid process and to approve the proposal from Gordian.
I amend my second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Right? That motion carries. Six dot three, consider and take possible action on the Baldwin HVAC duct replacement project. Cliff, I think based on our conversations we had on Friday, you got to, what that table is?
No, we're going to make the recommendations just to decline that bid due to that it is not within our budget. And go back out to bid and see if we can get more bidders on the project. So you can go ahead and actually decline accepting that bid.
Take no action.
Yeah, take that, we just take no action on approving it, so.
Okay, perfect.
Six dot four, discuss and take possible action on the upgrades to the PA system for AW Cox contingent upon the Standing Building Committee review and approval. Cliff?
So we're enhancing the PA system at Cox. We noticed during the past year, there were several dead areas, especially when the fire doors come closed. So we're looking to resolve those issues. We are going to be using the same contractor that put in our enhanced security systems and lockdown systems, and that was Eastern Datacom. So we're looking to award this work to Eastern Datacom in the amount of $13,800, or excuse me, $13,228 under the Pepham contract.
Thank you, Cliff. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
In a second. And that motion, that motion includes a contingency on standing building. Okay. Any questions for Cliff on this? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You, too. Item seven, Down Engineer, Janice Pleziak. End Waste Transfer Advisory Committee Chair. Until he takes his leave. But he serves until he's replaced. I had to inform him of that last week. He thought he was out. Discuss and take possible action to proceed with food scraps collection and unit-based pricing at the transfer station. A couple weeks ago, you guys were here to discuss this with us and made a strong argument for us moving forward with the process. I understand you've met with the folks in Madison. So, floor is yours.
Yes, we met with them. We had an excellent meeting. They came across extremely favorable, asked a number of questions. Some related, most of them related to the change, some related to just general what can be recycled and what can't. So every indication is that they are moving forward with, assuming that you move forward, they are looking for locations and vendors. It would be ideal to have the bags available and looking to ways to augment what we come up with for education of the community. Our next biggest step is developing that education plan and securing vendors. Of course, we'll need the help of the town to do that, since we can't go and just make contracts with vendors ourselves. And also, as needed, putting out to bid the actual purchase of the bags. So those are the three major things that are coming up, pending your approval hopefully today, that we can move forward and get busy developing that plan, beginning to work with contacting vendors both for the purchase of the bags and making the bags available. One of the strong elements that they did recommend in Madison is that at least initially, the bags be available at the transfer station, as we discussed here two weeks ago.
Yeah, so to formalize what you're actually approving, if you should decide to, is unit based pricing. We've identified the cost of the bags to be purchased, the 15-gallon bags at $1.50 per bag, and the 32-gallon bags at $3 per bag. That analysis was done to be sure we're covering our budget for the transfer station with those charges. So if you were to approve this, that would be kind of a plan to the fees that you would be approving. And then also, we do currently use Blue Earth. They've given us a proposal of $8,700 per year. If you'd like to entertain continuing with Blue Earth so that we can kind of have a seamless transition while we roll out this new program for at least a year. They had asked for a two-year program, but that's up to you if you want to just do a year, just to keep the process going with the known costs. So that would mean we would, instead of bidding out the food scrap collection hauler, we would just continue with them. Currently, we're...
The same pricing for the second year?
Yeah, they did say that they would hold the pricing. However, there could be, if there's a change in service, because that's for six toters, if we were to have like a very successful program, which we hope we will, it could go up. So up to you folks if you want to kind of lock in with them for one or two years.
Go up, yeah.
And just...
What would be the downside of doing two years?
I don't know. Just want to let you know, you know, that was, their hope was for two years. But, you know, since it's not a big process, I just wanted to give it to you. Right now, through the program, which is being paid for by the grants, which is now wrapped up, we were paying them $2,400 a month. So they were getting quite a bit of money over the past year because we didn't know what our volume, you know, was going to be. So it's a significant reduction, but still covering our costs.
I'd be in favor of approving it two years.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, the person's experience is talking to the attendance down there. I mean, it's been a positive experience.
Yeah, yeah, we've been very...
And I am surprised at how clean and, I mean, there's no smell. They haven't had any animal issues. So seems to be working, I support two years.
Great.
Especially like a big savings.
Yeah, just to point out, too, with the food scrap collection, we're looking to get a standard bag for people to use, which will kind of coincide with the bag that they would use for their trash. And then, or they can do no bag at all. So that's kind of the plan. We'll see how we roll out the whole process.
Do those bags?
No, there's no charge for the bags for, and that may change. We're going to work on all the details, working with Waste Zero to really, you know, set up the program to be successful. We hope to have the program in place in late summer, early fall.
Great. Let me struggle, not only with this, but, I mean, we have a plastic bag banned it down, and then we'd be required the other direction.
Well, I mean, you...
It's a little different, though. Those flimsy bags that they used to use at the stores.
I understand. There is no way out of it. You know, it's...
Well, we don't ban bags for people to use for their trash. I mean, we, you know, so it's kind of...
No, I know. I mean, in general, we're trying to reduce plastic. But we're saying, you got to put it, I mean, I run into it in another situation. And, you know, you're required to have it in a plastic bag. It is...
Yeah, it does keep things tidier in terms of trash bags, you know, you know. Yeah, it's better to have, you know, your waste in a bag so that it's not subject, especially with a hauler blowing out of the truck or out of the can when they're loading it.
I understand the mechanic.
If I can respond to that, one of the areas industry is looking into for plastic bags, not for trash, is the biodegradable. There are many now on the market that are sold for food storage. And I believe that's where we're going to be pushing the industry to go, even for the things like the trash removal, is that they ultimately become biodegradable in a very short period of time.
Charles, to your point, we've been doing at my house, the food scrap diversion. I could literally put my regular garbage in a paper bag.
Right.
Because there's no moisture.
Right.
No moisture going into it. So eventually, we may be able to do that. The food scrap diversion actually takes all, I'm sure individuals can do it, but...
Yeah, I think all of these answers, it's got to evolve. It just...
Yeah, ironic, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's the plastic thing.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, as you know, around the Water Authority, a big challenge we have ahead of us is addressing this PFAS issue. And here we are, you know, just encouraging it more and more.
All right. So is there a motion to approve moving forward with the unit-based pricing for garbage disposal at the Waste Transfer Station at the prices determined by the committee and also approved by Madison at $3 and $1.50 for the respective bags, as well as proceeding with a two-year agreement with Waste Zero for continued, uh, Blue Earth, that's right, Blue Earth, there was another question, but with Blue Earth for the food scrap diversion project. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Thank you. So the second, second. Further comments or questions? The question is, I had Waste Zero on my mind. I'm glad to hear that Waste Zero will still be involved with helping us implement this program.
Right. That's going to be in continuation with a grant. We have the grant extension currently with the, but we're also looking for an additional grant, which is a bridge grant to let us transition into this. But we're also looking for an additional grant, which is a bridge grant to let us transition into this new program at the transfer station. And part of that will include some of their, you know, fees for helping us through the program and for education. Um at the transfer station or, you know, townwide Madison too, to try and get people to understand what a, what a new program is and how to use it.
That's great. Um and just as a, a comment, Pam and I have been going back and forth over the last several days. We're about to launch a food scrap diversion program at the community center.
Right.
Which is arguably one of the larger producers of food uh scraps in town. Um you know, we're doing, you know.
Hot meals every day.
Breakfast and lunches every day there, so this, uh this is, I think this is gonna be a great opportunity.
Yeah, let's focus on the plastic water bottles.
Uh okay, so we have a motion in a second, uh let me try your minds, select woman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
That much occurs. Thank you very much for your work on this. This is a big step forward.
And uh thank you for keeping me on the.
Well, maybe we won't let you go.
Well, and, and, and these are the kind of things that, 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 that document justify why we are, we are a. Uh silver certified sustainable community, the Sustainable Connecticut, climate leader, uh climate leader designation as well. So this is, this is great work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Really, no, actually, uh we are uh Trey Kane, the chair of sustainable and also on the waste transfer board. And I am looking at the Greenwich model, which was. Trumpeted as a successful pilot model in Greenwich to get them to do it, but we've since learned that that has fallen apart, so. Uh one of the challenges for them is the storage and then, you know, the. And, and then either pick up by a Blue Earth or uh coming down to our station. You know, if we did all the restaurants, it might overwhelm our capacity at the waste transfer station, but it's something.
It's always evolving and I just. And again, it's counterintuitive. The biggest producers are.
They're not, I understand, right. Um we will, uh I'm glad to hear that Waste Zero will, will be uh retained for further consulting and also. Council of Governments uh has a resource, Pam Roach, I don't know if she's been at any of our meetings before. Uh but Scrog has her uh as a consultant on staff to help communities like ours develop these kind of, you know, trash, trash.
You know, that that's gonna be a, an, an area where. Regionalization or whatever word you wanna use, where multiple communities are gonna have to cooperate. Increase the volume to allow the commercial enterprises to make it worth their while, and it's just.
Yeah, but there are some folks who are tired of hearing me talk about this, like, I think D E P has to establish something on a statewide basis. Because currently today, we can't wire the hauler to do anything. We can't even get them to send in their annual reports. Um so until such time, it's deep takes responsibility for managing haulers, which the legislature has declined to even go near.
Hell, you're such a big problem for what to do with.
Well, more than that, they just don't like to negotiate with that industry, so. Um okay, uh item eight, public works director Dave Castro, eight dot one, discuss and take possible action on the purchase. Of an excavator to replace John Dear Backhoe with funding that was included in the capital plan. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. So our backhoe, we were approved for, to replace it, and we, after talking to my commission. Instead of replacing it with another backhoe, we would like to get a, an excavator, um. One size bigger than the one we currently have. It'd be a steel wrist uh attachment on it. What it does is, so when the machine's out like this, the bucket itself will spin three hundred and sixty degrees. So we got into a situation over at Chitting when we did the bridge over there, finishing it today. We had to re transplant some trees because we had to get the machine up to the area to get the angle to dig. Well, now you can reach over, turn your bucket sideways and just dig, and that's where the extra costs, why we're over what we, we had asked for. The machine also will pick up a catch base, and so instead of having three or four guys around a catch base and, and it's dangling in the air, the machine will just pick it up. Turn it, put it in the hole instead of putting them in harm's way. So we're looking at that and uh the, this is through Sourcewell, through uh Kamatsu. Uh we test, we tested three different machines and the Kamatsu one was by far the, the nicest one that we had. Uh we, we liked it a lot. The total price of it would be two hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um and we'd like to use our backhoe. Uh we were offered sixteen thousand through trade, but we'd like to auction it off, cause I think we can get around thirty thousand for this thing. Through uh, through the gov deals there.
A backhoe will go over the road with a trailer?
I was gonna ask this.
But the excavator's gonna have to have a trailer?
We have a trailer. Um it's because we have the grapple for the loader now, and we have the second loader. The backhoe really.
Okay, that was my question. We don't need.
Right, we don't need it, but with, with the backhoe, we have um attachments that we would put on the other. Uh backhoe or um excavator that we could use now. We have a hydraulic hammer, we can hammer off ledge on the side of the road now. We put it on one and use the other one digging and, I mean, we could do so many other things if we had that second machine.
The, the other question I have is. Learned this lesson before with buying trucks and stuff. Do we have any other Kamatsu equipment?
We do not. Uh the mechanics looked at it and they said this is not gonna be a problem, and it comes with. Uh four or five-year warranty on the machine, five-year warranty on the machine.
I can appreciate that, you know, that. My concern was, I remember some equipment we bought, and I was surprised that a short time later. We had to buy thirty thousand dollars worth of. Programs, software, stuff, in order to maintain it. And the new equipment, I don't know if it's true for this equipment or not, is, I mean, if it gets to a maintenance cycle, it stops operating.
No, this, this is not the case with this machine.
So we're comfortable with it, we don't know of anything specific. I mean, it would just seem to me, we're buying something. Be required to have. Maintenance information, whatever you wanna call it, that we just do it in a package and don't find out a few months later.
Right, and so we had them add in the, the five-year warranty for that, and then I asked them after, you know, we have mechanics. They're like, the parts are right here in Newington, just come get them, you can fix anything you want.
Yeah, it's, it sounds like these are more mechanical parts or bad electronic stuff.
Right, it's, it's, it's a great machine and it's actually toned down a lot on the electronics where everyone else went. Above and beyond, so.
Great, good work. Yeah, quick question. You said it was, this uh exceeds your uh the approved budget by how much?
Uh we were approved the last year for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay. Um have you uh worked with MJ? She just made herself available, so MJ uh potential funding source here?
Uh yes, uh David's correct, we have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand in bonding. I think this would be um a good time uh for the selectmen to approve the money. If, if we go out to surplus for the, the old item that the money gets put back into. Um and against the expense for this particular item, so that saves us the thirty thousand or hopefully whatever we would get for that. So instead of upping the selectmen's uh revenue for already, we could apply it to the purchase on, and, and save that money there.
Great, and, and if there was some shortage, we'd, you'd be able to find it in the, the capital, the, the public works capital budget at this point?
Yeah, but shortage within reason, yes.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Um further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, select woman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
Aye. Item eight dot two, consider take possible action to renew the contract with Durham Middlefield for two years for grinding services.
Yes.
Did you negotiate a deal for that second one?
Uh I talked, I talked to him and he actually said, he said, let's go three, and I'm like, whoa, let's, let's just go two, all right, uh but uh. They went up on their price, um obviously, so they were charging us fifteen thousand dollars every time they came to grind. Um so they went up to fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um but I'd like to, so the contract expired the last day of June, so I'd like to extend it for two years.
How, how often does this equipment come in?
Well, last year they came in twice. There was that much brush generated. Um just depends on. Uh what we're getting from the town, um because our guys are chipping everything that they cut down, but it's just whatever's brought in and. If you look at the revenue of the brush and leaf facility, it's gone up. People are, people are bringing stuff.
And so this, this is the weekly price of fifteen seven fifty, so. It, when, when the, the equipment come in, comes in, we have it for a week?
It's forty hours.
Okay.
And um usually, so usually it'll be. Seven days, there's a breakdown, we subtract from that.
And so that'll happen once or twice a year at least.
Right.
Okay, and we're making the revenues at least neighborhood of that amount, that thirty thousand dollars.
The brush and leaf facility, oh yes.
And then listen, it, people bring a lot of stuff, it's, it's better than all the alternatives. Well, have a thick pileup and.
We'd run out of space over there, that would be the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, um is there a motion to approve uh extending the, uh we do the contract with Durham Middlefield for a period of two years? So the weekly price is fifteen thousand seven fifty. Second.
Second.
Uh further comments or questions? Hearing none, uh let me try your minds, select woman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That much occurs.
I have one question.
Sure.
Were we eliminated taking grass cloaks?
Yes.
We did it because of the chemicals and that?
Yes.
What's the alternative for people? Where is that stuff coming?
Um you can mulch your grass. What I do is, I found that there are farms in town that will actually take them.
So we don't have any specific. I, I just wonder, you know, if you had noticed an increase in something, or I mean, have they just taken it to the regular transfer station or?
Uh they're not supposed to, um but I do know that some farms, I did talk to some of the farms in town, they're like, yeah, we'll take grass cloaks. Using for the animals. I, I don't know what, bedding or whatever, but um and then mulch, you can mulch your grass.
Yeah, so we haven't had some big influx somewhere of these chemical-filled stock.
No, no, no.
I'm scratching my head, I said, okay, we can't take it, so where's it going?
Well, people could also compost their grass and leave some.
Right.
Takes a little effort and, and you gotta.
Well, you compost it, or even individually, it's not the end of the world, but if, you know. If the issue is some chemical that we don't like, you know, it changes chemical.
Right.
Fair. Also, the option is not using chemicals.
Well, I.
Long, long hair is, is a circular trap.
Yes, it is. All right, so we have a big influx somewhere, dead end street full of grass.
No, nothing.
Okay, that would be bad if people start dumping crap.
It's gonna happen, or.
Um also just uh thank you, Dave, for jumping on that issue. I received the um notification through. Uh the website uh early this morning that someone was looking to have their sidewalks reclaimed because. Uh there was too much brush around them on Fair Street, so I sent out a uh email this morning. Uh and about fifteen minutes later, they've said, no problem, taken care of, so said they're already out there.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Got it. You got.
To keep moving.
That's right. Uh item nine, parks and recreation director Pam Gary and maintenance supervisor Todd Requo is not here. Unless he's online, but I don't see him. Uh nine dot one, this is discuss and take possible action on the purchase of fixtures for the community center bathroom upgrade. Good morning, Ben.
Morning. Morning, so we have a fiscal twenty-four capital improvement project to upgrade the bathrooms of the community center. So this is part of that improvement project. And um we have three quotes here with Ploton and Hills coming in as the lowest bidder at ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-three. And this would, this approval from the board would get us going to finish this project.
Excellent.
Can you remind me how much, say, this also includes replacing the countertops?
Right, this was, it was forty thousand total.
Total.
And you approved the countertops at the last, a couple, a couple of parts of community meetings ago, and this is basically breaking it up.
How many budgets?
Four years, yeah.
I have.
What Rick, well, that was his part of gift.
Yeah.
It's time to watch it, I don't know about.
I have a question, if I may.
It's serious.
Yes, Pam, what are these items? Like the second one down, top fill soap for six hundred and nineteen dollars. That's not just the soap dispenser, is it?
It's um, it's basically hand, handless, or, oh.
Touchless.
Touchless, sorry, handless, touchless. Yeah, touchless um dispensers.
So they're like electronic almost?
Mm-hmm.
Well. Wondering if you considered any also touchless sensor operated alternatives to this? I mean, just with a quick look online, I'm seeing all kinds of um other ones, wall-mounted units that are. You know, in the double digits instead of the triple digits. I don't know if it's because of the configuration of the room.
Right, I, you know, I, I really can't speak to that because Todd ended up doing that work to get the quotes. But I know that we were all settled in on getting the touchless everything.
This would be touchless, yeah, I mean, I'm not an expert in these things, but six hundred dollars for the thing that spits out the soap.
But there's eight, Susan.
No, that's each.
Five thousand.
Six each, six hundred.
Each.
I, I missed that.
Well, I, I see that Ploton and Hills is the, is the highest cost in regards to that item. But yet the lowest on everything else, so that's where they end up coming.
Yeah.
All the other ones were a little bit lower, a lot.
Yeah, one of those higher, one of those a fraction lower, but.
Yeah, fraction lower.
I don't know, that, that one kind of stands out at me. I don't know what the one under it is, the, the four seventy-six, I don't know what that.
Well, upon approval, I certainly can go back and have him look at that item again. That particular item and see if we can get it for a little lower.
Yeah.
I have no problem doing that.
Well, it seems to be, it seems to be market rate for those, for that type of equipment, right?
But I'm wondering if a different piece of equipment might serve the purpose. Also sensor operated, I completely agree with that, but honestly, I'm seeing um. Units online for, for just way less than that, just with a quick look.
How about if I get a little bit more detail on that particular item and then email the board of selectmen uh what that exactly is? And why it's six hundred and nineteen dollars? Cause I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I know, I, I, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry to put you in this position, I would, and I wish I had seen sooner and asked.
That are home products that are.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a good question.
You might end up like five in place for one of these, I mean, commercial versus a home.
It's hard to compare.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed, no, I, that's, that's a good point. It seems to me, just based on a quick look, that the, the ones that actually go at the sink. Which is probably, which must be what this is, are a lot more than the ones sitting on a wall. And what I'm reading on, on a quick read is that you wouldn't wanna have that wall-mounted one in a bathroom where you've got ten sinks. Because people are walking back and forth, but our bathrooms are not, right, there, I, I can't remember the layout, it's a couple sinks or.
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe something like that would work, but wall-mounted ones seem to be an awful lot less expensive.
I believe that we're keeping our wall ones as well and also putting in.
Touchless one.
The touchless ones in between the sinks.
Oh, I see.
Well.
I see.
Because otherwise, taking down the wall mount ones leaves a big hole in the wall.
Yeah.
So we're leaving those there and just adding these touchless. So let me, let me have, we'll, we'll do a little bit more homework on it.
Okay, that's great, and just an observation to keep in mind for the future, it wouldn't make too much difference on this one, but. Something they do at the Board of Ed when they buy a ton of stuff is, you don't need to take the lowest. Um vendor cost for everything on the list, you can mix and match. So just a thought for the future to, you know, kind of break it up by vendor, cause there were highs and lows and, and various vendors.
Right. It's a good suggestion.
Okay.
All right, so are we comfortable with moving forward with it, with a follow-up from Pam?
I am, I mean, I'll, I don't like to motion it.
Second, one second. Uh Susan, you're comfortable with uh?
Yes, absolutely. I wouldn't wanna hold anything up, it just um. Move with a follow-up.
But, but we will get a follow-up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'll follow.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh any further discussion?
Alright, we have a motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries, um, we need to coordinate our schedules for getting together later today.
I did just email Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that's the way it happens. Right, nine dot, uh, nine dot A, um, which is, uh, request from the registrar to discuss and take possible action on having. One voting location for the August thirteenth Republican primary.
Let me just, thank you for adding, um, this request on, let me clarify this, I'm not changing any location.
Okay.
The same, um, our request to you, uh, upon a state statute is early voting. And we request only one location.
For early vote?
Yes, and, oh, we have to come before you, before every election event. Because we could have two if we wanted to, but we think for the August primary, one location will suffice.
And that location would be?
The town hall and our office.
Thank you, okay.
For seven days before August thirteenth.
But for the regular primary, for the primary itself, the regular locations are all.
They're all, yes, by state statute, they have to be at the same location as November.
Thank you for that explanation.
Great, do you have to change your hours?
Well, uh, we have. The registrar's hours, we usually three mornings, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, but this is seven days. Beginning the Monday before, from ten to six, and two days, eight to eight.
So, we have to be open those hours?
Yep.
Yes.
And, and having one location sufficed?
Yes.
For the, uh.
Um, the presidential primary. And, and I, I believe that we can do that for the, um, November election too, we'll further look into that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Alright, um, we have to take action, right, uh, so is there a motion to approve? For the request to use a single location for early voting for the Republican primary, which takes place on August thirteenth. Uh, based on the availability that was just described by, uh, the registrar.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Further comments or questions? I have one. With it being in, uh, August, big vacation month, are you gonna be able to staff that?
Yeah, I, I started about three or four weeks ago and everyone said, I don't know what I'm doing, I said, well. This is August thirteenth, so.
Seven, seven days prior.
And, even, you know, we checked the schools because I know, you know, summertime schools, so. There was a chance we couldn't use the gym at Baldwin, even if, even if we couldn't, we all, you know, we could be in the hallway. Or the cafeteria area, so that looks promising, but things come up, so we'll work around it. Okay, thank you.
Do we have to vote? Yes, no, we didn't vote.
We had, we had, we had, sorry. Move in a second.
Second, try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item ten, discuss to take possible action on ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford Affordable Housing Commission as a result of an earlier public hearing. Um, I think we're at a place where we're gonna add four members, uh, so that would allow for us to start the process. Um, and is there a motion to amend?
I'll make the motion.
Second, second, we got it, everybody's on it, uh, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, item eleven, appointments and resignations, eleven dot one, act on a recommendation to reappoint Aaron Hirschman to the Board of Ethics. For a term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, that motion carries unanimously, eleven dot two, uh, act on a resignation received from Terry Bergantino. From the Human Services Council, is there a motion? With appreciation.
Appreciation and regret, thank you.
Second, um, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, item twelve, uh, request for use of town property, act on a request from the, uh. North Guilford Congregational Church, the place assigned on the green, advertising its North Guilford Country Fair, taking place August seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. With sign placement being August third through the seventeenth, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
So, it's got it, and then second by Lou, uh, um, let me try your minds, select woman, uh, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, community reports, we don't have Sandy, and actually, the community report is about, would be mostly about the. Uh, Affordable Housing Committee, correspondence?
We received a number of communications from Mr. Holman, I just wanted to acknowledge, receive those.
Thank you. Uh, anything else under correspondence? Um, old business? New business? Public forum?
No.
Dead?
Maybe.
No? How about anybody online, no, it's all officials or employees, so, uh, with, with nothing further. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. In a second, down to debate a motion, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
We're gonna take care of that.